And that, and that they understand what their laws are. I was not willing to understand what they are. And they don't, releasing of private information. So, I would hope that Madam Chair would allow. I would hate to see this not to go through because she's a part of the community. And it's a simple question, why would you stop to then give good information or questions to come through? We shouldn't do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Uh, the Chair like asked the Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Yes, I generally don't speak on, um, on people. But the Presiding Officer determined if that person should come up or not. Do I think that Ms. Mohammed should, um, come up and speak? I'm not gonna be, I'm not the chair of this meeting, so I'm not making that determination. But it is her responsibility to decide if someone is called up or if there is relevance. So, um, I am going to work with Chair on this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? The Chair like asked the Councilwoman if you can take notes?
Well, I think it is. Well, I think that Sister Mohammed should be able to come to the lecture and speak. Because we are discussing this Genesee Health Plan, uh, consortia collaborative. And if she has anything to say about HIPAA, I want to go on it.
Right.
Before I call. There is no rule that says she can't. And I would hope that if my colleagues understand that it's up to the Chair. I would hope that the Chair could understand that it is some relevance.
Right.
To whatever we're talking about. It's not your relevance.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll be, uh, supporting my colleague in the appeal. Thank you.
Someone has an opportunity to speak. I will now discuss why. Uh, I am stating that she is not relevant to this conversation at this time. Uh, once again, we're gonna point to Rule 27.3. Only the Presiding Officer may call an individual up to the podium to speak or answer questions. Other council members would have to petition the Presiding Officer to make this request. Many of these requests that can be denied and appealed as it has happened. We are currently in the appeal process, only reclining, uh, reclining, excuse me, declining to allow her to speak. The reason being, we have several people from these organizations who are here who can speak to this, who can probably answer questions. Also, my colleague was asked for the offer question and was given an answer as well. Um, we also have another opportunity because this is special affairs where Ms. Mohammed, her, her input is more than welcome during public speaking at that time. If she would like to elaborate on what she knows about HIPAA laws. This time right now is for those who are part of this resolution, who have been invited with Genesee Healthcare to speak on this resolution. And so I want to make sure that we are certain that we open the door to this today. And somehow someone else that has nothing to do with the resolution, we go on and on and on. And we step outside of the room, but we need to be focused on that agenda item and that resolution. I would hope that my colleagues are not rooting to the fact that they would allow a resolution to fail simply, to hold something hostage, to have something happen that does not need to happen. Um, by line is requesting the request was denied, roll call, matter of. Right now, we're going on, um, overturning the ruling of the Chair as whether or not Ms. Mohammed should have been able to speak. Ms. Lewis.
Now. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Murphy Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Firebrandt?
We got it.
The fourth round is not in? The vote is four yes, three no?
The vote is, I'm sorry, did you repeat that thing?
Four yes, three no?
The vote is four yes, three no, the ruling of the Chair stands. Um, Ms. Burns, you did have some time left. Would you like to continue to take?
Of course, I'm gonna take my time. And I'm gonna talk about the unfair ruling. And so I believe it's two minutes or something. And Sister Mohammed, I'm kind of disappointed. I don't even appreciate the Chair rooting to the fact that we may not hold on something because you weren't allowed. That's pure speculation. You shouldn't have went there. I don't appreciate that. Not at all. We tell right your part of this community and they don't have their good vote here today. And so to lose that, they won't even say that. We had questions, as simple as that. You know, and when you hear here, I mean, to allow you to, another two minutes or twenty-five minutes, when simply let her, she's got two minutes or something left on you. That was it. That was it. And so when you give people who are in this chair, who take power trips.
Yep.
And you don't pay attention to the residents. That was something just simple. She had something to offer. She is a healthcare professional. Hers is certifying question. And you don't know if they answered my question to my degree of satisfaction. So you can't think for me or tell me how I'm satisfied. They weren't disagreeing. They were nodding and saying, hey, we're having a good conversation. She went out there and talked to them in the audience with them. And we need to stop this control stuff. Where I'm starting to discount was, we can't run by the dictation, shit is so tired. You have to stop that. Let the information flow freely. Something wrong with her asking a question. It was a good question. We wanted to know. Most people don't know about HIPAA. You know, who has access to your information? Who should not? What can be shared? And what is certified? Those are basic questions. So when we want a more informed resident and a knowledgeable one, we have to let the information flow through. You, Mr. Chair, decided not to do it, and in my opinion, you are dead wrong for that. You are dead wrong for that. And it's unfortunate that you use these controlling, uh, tactics and you have others who don't. And you would stop someone from finding out a question just simply because you're the Chair. And you wonder what some of these meetings would justify. Tell the Chair, if your colleagues have a question, let your colleagues get the question answered. It's not something extraordinary. It's just a simple respect. Simple. Y'all respect other people who control, but you don't have your five votes to that. You don't. You simply do not have to. And then to a who said was wrong. It was wrong.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the second round? Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the second round? All right.
So, I will be abstaining for this one because I'm not gonna be part of a dictator. And to, when you don't wanna have an independent, um, medical mind speak on this, whether or not you think you're relevant or not. It's not like she was coming up here to attack a member of the council. She wasn't coming up here. She was coming up here to speak specifically to this resolution and questions about. So, when you wanna act like it, you can allude to it all you want, because I will be abstaining. And maybe you get your five votes next time, but until you stop acting like a dictator, that's when we can start working as a company. We worked fine. We worked fine on Wednesday. And guess who wasn't here? So, I will be abstaining on it because that's the only way that we can stop this nonsense.
Are you done? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? This was the five that you have before.
And you know what? I echo the sentiments of my colleague in the eighth ward. Yeah, we need to put a stop to this tonight. And you guys don't have your five votes, do you? And you probably won't have your five votes for the rest of the, uh, until, until May, until somebody get elected. This has to stop. I didn't see anything wrong that Sister Mohammed coming forward to, to voice what she needed to say about HIPAA. But since you guys, the leadership, they call you the leadership team. Since you wanna lead, let's lead. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to floor? The Chair like asked the Councilwoman in the second ward.
Thank you. It is unfortunate that we have colleagues here that are willing to stop the business of the city. Just because the colleagues are adhering to the rules set forth by this body. They are willing to stop Genesee Health System from getting the money that they deserve because they want to play a personal politics because they do not want to follow the rules. This happens quite often. And it's very disheartening that they will come down here, express interest in receiving these funds so they can help this community. And then we have colleagues that will take a whole pivot and turn into something that it was not. What we are doing, we are on a resolution, 240073. And that resolution is exclusively to pass money to the Genesee Health System.
Plan.
Sorry, plan, plan. So, they can disseminate the money to the much needed organizations. But instead of being focused on what this community need, we wanna focus on the fact that self-evident audience member. Who according to these rules, the audience, they have their three minutes during public speaking. Because the Chair utilized her prerogative of not calling up an audience member to speak at the lecture. You're gonna hold this entire body hostage and then to say that we may not get anything else passed tonight? That's a problem. And if, and I hope the residents hear that. This is what it looks like when the business of the city of plan is being obstructed by our colleagues. This is very unfortunate. The Chair read, and the rule was read, Rule 27.3. The rule was read, and I'll go ahead and be really clear. Now, if Ms. Mohammed, if she was a HIPAA expert.
She is working.
If she was an expert, in that, in that field.
Health, Masters in Healthcare Administration.
That's only that, Master. But right now, but we have, okay, we have too many people yelling out, so we need some order. And Ms., uh, Pastor Al Kell, I heard that, so let's not do that. And also, Ms. Mohammed, let's not do that.
Oh, yes ma'am. We will do that, but this is what I will.
Um, well, uh, Madam Chair, can you please pause the time? Uh, everybody just stop and just get yourself back together, sat there and say that this is, um, a passionate chamber, which there's a decision that has been reached that you do not agree with, completely get that. But I would ask that you keep those passions a little bit more buried inside. Please continue.
As I conclude, again, I hope that my colleagues will have a change of heart. Instead of opening up the work of the Genesee Health Plan because of personal beefs and beliefs when everything is stated right here in the rules. You know, these are the same colleagues that say, let the audience talk, let them yell out. All of that is against council rules. So.
What's your opinion, Madam Chair?
Can you please correct the councilperson, second ward? She is not to speak to the motives of her councilpeople. Roberts Rules 43.21. Isn't that y'all favorite rule?
And again, it's unfortunate to be interrupted by something that's totally irrelevant. That was a quote that came from our Councilwoman in the fifth ward. This, she said this, and it's on video. But the point of the matter is, we have rules that we follow in order to maintain order. Okay? We wanna make sure that we maintain order in the chambers as we conduct the business of this city. Nothing more, nothing less. And understanding what the colleague in the, uh, Madam Chair said, once we start doing that, then we will, then we will continue to open up the gate for other people to come to the lecture. So what we're trying, what appears, what she's trying to do, maintain order, make sure that we speak to the individual responsible for this resolution and move the business forward. Again, this is the telling time. We've heard our colleagues speak on, we may not get anything else passed if we don't have five votes. Well, according to the count, we should have seven votes, especially if we want something good for the city. That's all that matters. So hopefully, they will reconsider their stance and move the business forward. If not, this will challenge the residents, the health plan, exactly what you need to see. But I definitely guarantee, we will continue to do what's in the best interest of the city. We will continue to do what's in the best interest of the people, and you will get your funding.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this, uh, Councilwoman Murphy, you have the floor. Mr. Mitchell?
What?
Please stop yelling out. Mr. Mitchell?
What?
Please stop yelling out. Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. So, we just had a committee going in. It was five of us here. And I'm not sure what, uh, people was watching. But I know five of us was able to get the business done. And although we don't always agree with one another, we was able to go through and get the business done. We were not going back and forth with each other. Um, we may just agree on some issue, but we still got to get it done. We were here late and we finished the work. What is, uh, very unfortunate, is heartbreaking, is that we are, um, saying that, um, Audie Mohammed is not an expert.
Thank you.
She worked in the healthcare field, and I'm sure she's familiar with the HIPAA law. And regardless of whether you are a doctor, masters, or PhD, or bachelors, or associate, or high school diploma. If you work in the healthcare field, um. Basic 101 is you are to protect people's privacy. And if you are taking no PhD, or no bachelor's degree, or no bachelor's, or associate, or probably even a high school diploma. You could probably just have a TV or just have some experience to be able to, um, talk about the, um, um, HIPAA law. And just as, um, important as the four agencies that's here tonight to receive funding. One of the things that's assigned me about this healthcare was I was not in love with, um, the outcome of the funding type. That's why one of the questions I asked was, um, what outside of high, high blood pressure and diabetes is the RL Johns Community Outreach Services? Um, is one to do? And, and, and example, let me give you an example of what I was thinking of when I thought about high blood pressures. I was thinking, maybe when we give this funding, we, you guys are going to, um, provide high blood pressure cups for residents free of charge. Or the diabetes, um, for people that are diabetic. I think they got these pens or something that people, um, use to check their, um, blood. So those just are some things that I'm, I'm not sure that you need to have the expertise in the, um, healthcare field. Or be providing that services in order to give free, um, high blood pressure cups to people who is at a disadvantage to be able to afford high blood pressure cups or, uh, diabetic, um. Pens to check their, um, blood for those that are diabetic. I know my grandmother was one, and I know she used to, uh, take a shot or shoot herself or incident or something. And now they got different things now where they shake your blood, or do your paper, or stuff like that. I'm not saying that's what, um, the cause of it is, but had you came up here, um, talking about that, that was what'd be more sensible to me. And then when you talk about the, um, mental health council, I thought, I thought about my young, um, kid that used to live with me that had psychological issues. That I used to take to Genesee Health System that had this, um, sister, so I didn't really see anything beyond this and some of what you guys are providing and some. So, I, I'm just saying, I'll duplicate the services. So to make a long story short, to get back to the, um, um, Audie Mohammed. I think what she has to bring to the test is equally important as me listening to these four agencies. And it would not have cost anything for you guys to, um, and I do agree to respect the Chair. And it's up to the Chair whether she wants to, um, bring that person there. But that two minutes or that thirty seconds that y'all could have run Audie Mohammed here to the podium. And then she could have just said, okay, um, the HIPAA law, we just wanna be careful what we do with the HIPAA law, but we not made a big deal out of it.
Thank you.
Yes, um, any organization that provides medical services must follow HIPAA.
Yeah.
That's the law. Period. And I believe it's under state law for the Heady Action Access Center. I always want to call you something, but for the hearing prepared. But they are required to maintain confidentiality when, during interpreting. So postponing this makes no sense. And it's, to me, I think if we have to postpone it to get it passed for two weeks, then we will do that. But to me, this shows some childish behavior, um, to my own council members.
Yeah.
It is the law, both federal and state.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's just state law for insurance lenders. Am I correct on that? Okay. So, all of these services are covered under this. Period. So, stopping this, it is prerogative of the Chair not to call someone else. That's in our rules. Would I have called up Ms. Mohammed? Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. Because I already, I already knew the answer, because I take, I mean, I was, I was involved working at Early Medical Center, and I had sixteen years in HIPAA training. So, um, and I worked in finance, so we had to go through the same training as the medical professionals in regards to it. It was required. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to keep this in special affairs, only to save the resolution. Because if I don't, they will vote against it and it will die. So I make a motion to keep this resolution in special affairs.
There's been a motion, um, to keep this resolution in special affairs. Is there any support? It's been moved to properly support it. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Murphy, you have the floor.
So, just for y'all, agencies that's here today, it's unfortunate that we gotta keep this in special affairs. Because we will not allow Audie Mohammed to come up and speak for twenty seconds, thirty seconds, or one minute. And this is what happens when we don't allow the opportunity. So even though the Chair has the opportunity to speak, all the Chair has to do, and you know, I, I support the Chair. All the things that listen right here, I support, just for the simple fact. I don't like, it almost feel like we are, um, belittling someone that is in the healthcare provider position. And because they don't have a certain title behind their classification as a healthcare provider. They don't deserve the equal right to come to the podium and just give us, okay. We just wanna make sure that, um, HIPAA thing, if we felt like they was wanting to level or right or whatever, we not gonna be like, hey, hold on, you off topic. That what you're talking about is not germane to the resolution at hand. If, if, if Audie Mohammed wanted to get here and speak on the, and just give a suggestion. I'm sure these four agencies that's here waiting to receive money would not have got up and opposed her coming to the podium and just answering a simple question that my colleague wanted to ask about, um, HIPAA law. But instead, we don't make a big deal out of it, and here we are now. And now it's gonna stay in special affairs because you guys may not have had the vote to, um, move it to council just on behalf of someone saying, yes, Mohammed. Audie Mohammed, come on and speak. So that right there, while we wanna talk about petty and childish, because I heard my colleagues say, it might be childish to some of us that, um, may vote against it. What I thought is could be petty, is that we don't allow somebody that got, been working in the healthcare field for years and have the experience of dealing with the 101 experience. Because ain't nothing like being able to have that 101 contact when it comes down to dealing with people in the healthcare. And I ain't never worked in the healthcare field, but for those who have worked in the healthcare field, they the ones that's the experts in, um, making sure that these people with high blood pressure and, um, diabetic that's coming to, um, RL, um, Food Services, um, Healthcare Center on Royal Highway, making sure that they, um, are protected going healthcare. Because everybody don't wanna come through no line and put their information out there and don't want to support.
That's right.
You all have stuff on Facebook right now about people that done died and they help, they personal information out there on, um, healthcare. So people are, um, particular about what they wanna put out there, and I wanted to hear from her. So if y'all want people in special care, that's the ability that's up here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
I said I'm sad, either better, and here's the thing. Questions have to be satisfied. I support this project. My colleagues should have extended the law. It was just per decency. This is the last twenty seconds. I, y'all have to do it at six thirty. Um, I support this project. No one person is any better or higher than me. She had questions. I was very clear when I stated, and I said Sister Audie Mohammed, I'm gonna say her name. Because her questions have to be answered along with, I will certify it. I don't work in the health field. I, I don't. And so there was just, she had some questions which were being answered. But to have my colleagues shoot them down and to remain to the fact that they're, they weren't willing to let it through, that's not working together. It's just not. You know, I know that she works in the health, so I'm American, correct? People did have their private information without being on social media. And our, you know, the question should have come from our HR department that they were questioning. And so it, it's a very, um, sensitive topic, and it was a, a good question. And, and I just don't like the fact that you wanna tell me as a Chair what I wanna know, or what I should want to know. A good Chair makes sure that all questions are answered to hear the other council members are satisfied. It's just being fair. It's being fair and it's showing respect to your colleagues. You know, don't shut me down. I still, I don't certify it, and I'm not gonna find out today. She couldn't get those thirty seconds, and I had, and it was on my time. You know, so I didn't ask for extended time. I didn't ask to, to change the rules, you know. I had no problem going through the Chair, and he referring back to 27.3. They try to manipulate the rules. The rule says ask the Chair. The Chair had the decision to allow her to come up. We would be right here talking right now. We could have been done with this, but their rule is like, I'm gonna follow. And when you rule by the dictator, tell me that's bad for the city, I'll roll with it, five. I'm an independent thinker. I make my own decisions, and my decisions are mine as I own my decision. And so it's nothing from you being childish or say someone's holding it up. Y'all are allowed to go through. And then you defended the fact, you started saying, hey, let's go ahead and let her come up to give these questions answered because we can get this passed tonight. She did it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time, Councilwoman Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I, I agree with my colleague, um, Councilwoman Murphy, Councilwoman Burns. But what I wanna do, I wanna make a substitute, um, motion. I would like to, um, send this to, back to the Finance Committee. Send it back to the Finance Committee. We have all the information that we need. I support this one hundred percent. But we still, like my colleague said, we wanted to find out what we needed to find out about HIPAA. Okay? And the HIPAA certification. Um, and I don't, I don't find, I, I don't find, um, you know, no reason not to send it back to committee and then, and then we'll send it forward to council. And that's my motion.
There is a motion for sending it back to Finance. Is there a second? Is we move it properly supported by the councilperson in the eighth ward? Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Iver, you have the floor.
I have no doubt in my mind by the, by, I mean, I don't know how my colleagues will vote, but I have a feeling that this will pass seven to nine. But in order for us to move forward and get away from these tired dictators up here, we have to take a step back.
Amen.
And it's unfortunate, thank you. But we have no other recourse but to do what exactly we do. So, don't take offense to it, but, um, I will not be supporting sending it here. I will only support sending it back. Because when it sends back, guess what? We'll have the opportunity again to call up Ms. Audrey Mohammed and see if the chair then denies it again. So, we will, if the Finance Chair will, will allow her to speak. So, this is what we have to do. This is what democracy goes on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to, uh, speak at this time? Counselwoman in the second ward.
Thank you. And again, I highly apologize for this behavior. This is not behavior that can take place from those people that are elected to serve you. Having been vindictive behavior. This has nothing to do, us following these rules have nothing to do with you not getting your, this resolution passed. Nothing. And if we're gonna go ahead and let anybody speak outside of public comment, who else in here wanna speak on HIPAA? Anybody in here that wanna come up and speak?
No, just her.
There, that's exactly my point.
Just her.
This is not a place to have round two of public speaking. But what it all tied back into is our council rules. See, our, our council rules, see, you from here making noises. Our council rules. And, and that's the lady who wanna come speak, making all that noise.
That wasn't her.
And that's very unfortunate.
That wasn't her. That wasn't even her. That was her.
Madam Clerk, stop the time. Madam Clerk, stop the time. Audience members, please refrain from yelling out. Audience members, please refrain from yelling out.
Of course.
I just, I'm trying to make sure that I get a single audience. I'm sorry, I'm trying to quiet something that you can't speak for a second. All right, what's your point of order?
Madam Chair, rule twenty-seven point two, which states at any time, council cannot become argumentative. Councilwoman Laila Lewis become argumentative and accusatory of an audience member, and she asked the wrong audience member. She needs to warn him.
Councilwoman Lewis, please speak to the chair, finish.
I'm not speaking to anyone.
Oh, that fine.
Right. And so, a, as the time proceeds, I wasn't arguing. And if I did have the wrong person, if councilperson Burns sees someone that's yelling out against orderly, or according to these rules, it is the obligation of this body to maintain order. So she should have, so she should have called that person.
Madam Clerk, please stop the time. Madam Clerk, please stop the time. Councilwoman Burns, what is your point of order?
Thank you. Thank you. Robert's rules, point three point twenty-one. She cannot speak to my voters. She needs to make sure she followed what she doing, which is incorrect.
Councilwoman Lewis, please proceed.
Unfortunately, this is what we have to go through to get the business of the city done. Nothing to do with you, nothing to do with you at all. All of this stuff is personal right here. And it's unfortunate that you have to sit here through and witness this.
Sir, can you please, can you please not speak up from the audience, sir? Sir, can you please not speak up from the audience? Thank you, sir. I'm, this, I'm, sir. Please continue back to the list.
And so, this is what we consistently go through. And this shouldn't even be a, a conversation. If we aren't to allow people to speak outside as, as professional experts, witnesses, put it in the rules. But here's the deal, these rules been this way for a very long time. Our colleagues have the liberty to add it to the rules. The rules that they don't like, that need to be amended, we're working on rules right now. But when you don't do the work to, to do what you need to have happen, this is what we get, constant distractions. According to the rule that this body voted on, the chair isn't on. And it's unfortunate that you aren't being disciplined and chastised because of, because of vindictive behavior. So yes, those that are voting, that, that are not willing to support it, you remember this. You remember this stat. But I, I'm not sending this back to Finance for what?
No.
It's a waste of time. Well, let's go ahead and move it to council, as we should.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to go ahead and sign, Counselwoman Murphy, go ahead.
Um, so, what's probably gonna happen, if we don't have the votes to send this back to Finance, it will probably die. We may not have the votes. Um, it was a first motion to, um, keep it in special affairs. It was a, well, originally it was a motion to move it to council. But because we didn't allow Audrey Mohammed to speak, the motion was made to keep it in special affairs, it will won't die. Now, if we, um, move it to Finance and we don't have the votes to move it to Finance, it might, don't go nowhere. We may not have the votes, so. Don't, don't believe that we don't wanna support this. We wanna support this. We looking forward to it guys. Um, tunes ain't gonna make a break anything, because even if we voted on it today, the administration still gotta prepare their contracts and all of that, this kind of stuff. So it ain't like y'all was gonna leave out here, um, tonight with sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars apiece. And y'all still just gonna wait. Trust and believe. And y'all probably gonna have a contract done until probably a month, because the administration got to prepare contracts. You guys know, because y'all have received funding. So, um, hopefully it'll last for two. But what I want my colleagues to realize is all voices matter, all people matter, all job expectations matters. And regardless whether you wanna believe it or not, Audrey Mohammed's job as, um, a health field worker matters. So, regardless of what we think, we not trying to be petty. All we want to do is be inclusive and bring in those other, um, ah, ah, hey, we didn't think about that. So maybe Audrey would have been able to come and speak and said, okay. Just, just like, we just had a conversation about Good Church. And we talked about, you know, maybe we collaborate with Good Church. And maybe there was some things that sister Audrey Mohammed would have brung that could have brought value to what we're trying to do. That's all we was trying to do. And all we trying to, um, say is that, um, y'all program and the work that you guys does matter. Not only does the work that you guys do matter, the work that Audrey Mohammed does matter too. And what this is doing is just letting y'all know that we want y'all to treat other people in other fields just as equally important as y'all coming up here, um, getting funding for three hundred thousand dollars to help y'all get y'all started. That's it.
Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Anyone else? Okay, since there's no one else who would like to, um, speak at this time, I'm gonna take my time. So right now, um, there is a third motion on the floor. This third motion is to send this back to Finance. I will not be supporting that motion simply because it's safe and everybody supports you. So what we send it back to Finance, where if everyone supports it, we can vote on this tonight. I, I don't understand where the accusations about, uh, something with Ms. Mohammed's skill that she's been from. At no point in time did I ever question her skill or expertise. I simply said she doesn't have anything to do with this particular resolution. Everybody keeps saying all she needed was thirty seconds. And during council, she has two minutes and thirty seconds, more than a third she would have gotten tonight, and in this particularly. So she still has breathing to when she could have spoken to this at council. We keep talking about HIPAA, HIPAA violations, HIPAA this, HIPAA that. Everyone sitting on that row that came here to speak tonight can speak to HIPAA, HIPAA violations and HIPAA everything else. They do this day in and day out. And again, this is nothing to knock Ms. Mohammed, because I never once said anything about her expertise or what she brings. I simply said that the people that can speak to this resolution are here to speak to the resolution. Any HIPAA questions or anything that needs to be explained, can be explained. Anybody that works in the medical field already knows about HIPAA and violating it and anything of that nature. We keep talking about, um, for, you still had time to ask questions. You still had a minute twenty-eight, even when Ms. Mohammed was not given the opportunity to speak. You still had time to bring up the experts to speak to this. I don't, and now that we are a third motion with all of this extra conversation, that doesn't even need to happen. Because if you support it, you support it. It doesn't have to be, I'm gonna punish you because I don't like the fact that I don't have five votes. We don't need to do any of that. If you support it, support it and keep it pushing. And there, there was no argument, there were no issues. I respectfully declined to ask, is my right as the chair? The people that wanted to speak to this resolution, they, they stood here, they gave us papers, prepared a whole ten-minute presentation, and then after that, are sitting here willing to continue speaking and asking questions. If you have a question about what's going on with this resolution, ask the people who have to deal with this money and how this is gonna work, who's in this resource network. We don't have to prolong it, we don't have to point fingers. I'm supporting for this to go to Finance, and then once that motion fails towards go to Finance, it's gonna go back to the motion with staying in, um, special affairs. I will not be voting for that either. So once that fails, we're gonna go for it to go to council. If it fails going to council, no worries, there is a recourse. But since they say they support it, we'll see if they support it. We're gonna call Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley, no? Ms. Wendy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Fife?
Yes.
Ms. Worthington, yes. Ms. Lewis?
No.
The vote is four yes, three no?
The vote is four yes, three no. That motion to send it back to Finance fails. We are now back on that other motion, which was to leave it here in the special affairs. Three, four, six, and five have already spoken. Um, if I did not call your number, would you like to speak to this motion? All right, nobody wants to speak to this motion, so I'm gonna take my time. Do you wanna speak? Okay, so I wanna take my time, can we? Start the time? All right, so what just failed, and this is me explaining the process of what is happening right now. What just failed was there was a motion on the table to send it to Finance that failed, which means we had to go back to our other motion, which was the second motion, to, um, leave it here in special affairs. Again, I will not be supporting this motion because we all said we support this. So if we all support it, we can support it tonight. There's no reason, there's no need for all of the extra stuff. Um, this has nothing to do with you all. The community has been far too many times, time and time again, dragged into whatever else is happening. This is our opportunity to leave you all, let you leave, um, with this going to council. So we can decide our next steps. Ms. Mohammed, whose expertise is welcomed. I welcome to hear from her during public speaking at council. Again, my decision had nothing to do with Ms. Mohammed. It could have been anyone. And the bottom line is they cannot speak to this resolution. The people that can speak to this resolution are here. Once this happens, we have a whole other meeting after special affairs. So if this passes through special affairs, we immediately go into council after this meeting. And Ms. Mohammed can come up here as the respected community member that she is and ask the questions that she has. And you all will still be sitting there to answer those questions as well as we can assist and enjoy council. So no need to stop it, you're going to council, we can do this all tonight. So, we're calling Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Wendy Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
No.
Ms. Fife? No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Officer Murphy?
Yes.
The vote is two yes, five no?
The vote is two yes, five no. That fails to stay in special affairs. So we now go back to sending this to council. Um, and so far, the second round, six, eight, and five have all spoken. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the second round of sending this to council? Mr. Murphy, you have the floor.
So, I'm going to send this to, um, city, um, council. But I, I'm still want to send a message to my colleagues that Audrey Mohammed was mad, regardless of what we think. And as a chair, I do respect you having the opportunity to be a part of, of, but, and I always say to some of you, you gotta, you gotta know the whole, you gotta know the fault. You don't even take to choose our battles. This battle to not allow her to speak for thirty seconds or one minute or whatever my colleague had left to call her up to ask her questions, don't, it turned into this. Now, all we did to turn it to this, it'll turn into accusations of our colleagues making accusations of our voters. My voters, and I always try to take, say, even though people may not believe it. I try to do what's right. And I do not see nothing wrong with allowing her the space and the opportunity to get up here and speak. And we getting ready, I'm about to remember this. We getting ready to vote on some rules. We need five votes. Remember it, listen. One time. Listen clearly. Y'all need five votes. Y'all get ready to vote and have a public hearing about some rules. So if you telling me now with these old rules that we got in place, that y'all vote, because I want, one, I wrote a rule down. I think you said rule twenty-seven point two or twenty-seven point one? That the chairperson has the ability to call who they so choose to speak. If we go by the old rules and the old rules saying that y'all don't want Audrey Mohammed to speak, just imagine what's getting ready to happen if we get these new rules. Because guess what? At the end of the day, y'all need five votes. So, would you wanna, um, look at your own eyes and look at moving forward, you can be clear that you know what you doing. Because if we getting ready to vote and took that right there, I'm not sure I'm gonna vote for no new rule. So don't come asking me pussy where you at or is you gonna vote on me the rule? Because if the old rules telling me that Audrey Mohammed don't matter, I can't imagine what these new rules are. I, I wrote down what Bridgette said about one minute for public speaking. I know that may not be in the rules.
It is.
If it is in the rules, we got some problems.
Thank you.
She looking sick.
Get on, Quince.
They quiet now.
Looked like they lost another one.
Ms. Murphy, you done?
Did you say it?
Okay, um, six, eight, five, and three have spoken. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
There come Satan.
Councilwoman in the second ward?
I guess Satan.
Okay, thank you. None of this is funny. I wish it was a joke. I wish that it was a joke, but it's not. None of this is a joke. And the fact that we have people laughing, thinking that it is. See, here's the deal. The deal is regardless of who you are and however you feel, we aren't to abide by these council rules. And I encourage my colleagues in the third ward, reread them. Please reread them. Get familiar with them. And if they are appealing and appropriate to you, go for them. If not, then no, that's fine. Because at the end of the day, we don't need any. Because at the end of the day, we don't need any more riotous behavior in these chambers. But we don't wanna forget about the riot that we basically had in these chambers when we had individuals. And one of the, I mean, we can, we can throw our hands up, but this is why we follow the rules. So we will no longer be the last and stock of America when it comes down to our council meetings. I mean, I've never seen anyone penalize people for utilizing rules. I've never seen people penalized for utilizing their position to get information from the people who's on the resolution. I've never seen this ever happen. But it's like the table are turned and my colleagues always say, um, who aren't her? She talking when I'm talking. It's apparent that wasn't supposed to happen. It's apparent to see how serious people are taking people's health. It's apparent to see how much they care. It looks like ego is affecting community problems. That's what appears to be. And unfortunately, you know, as we have, we have people talk about votes and stuff, I encourage every single one of my colleagues, yeah, you're supposed to do what's in the best interest of your constituents. Don't get, we all need your five votes, but the community do. And so your five votes is needed to move this resolution forward. So we can do something great for the residents. If they do not vote to send, there's no reason, nothing holding anyone up. If they don't vote to send this to council, it goes to show how much people feel, how sincere and how motivated they feel about diabetes, pain, high blood pressure testing, everything that has been there. It goes to show how serious we are about getting those things done. It goes to show how serious we are about supporting the R.L. Jones Health Center. Mother Intercession, this goes to show how serious you are. Regardless of how, of anyone up here or anyone out there, it's all about having decorum, decency and order. And as chair of this body, I will always vote in favor of that. Moreover, I will vote in the best interest of this community. And you are doing the work that's in the best interest of this community. So you have a yes vote. There is no reason for us not to support this. And I have to keep pushing that because this is the business of the city. The person that wanted to come to the election was recorded on video going to hell during public reading, broken rules. But that has nothing to do with this meeting. I'm just saying, if we allow things to become disorderly, we have witnessed here in this chamber what disorderly this look like. We have witnessed that. We don't wanna go back to that. We wanna make sure that you're elected officials, that we are exercising and displaying the decorum that you elected us to display. And one of the things that you guys did not elect us to display was tit for tat and payings. And that's what we are exuding here on this body. Nothing more, nothing less. I couldn't stop talking like oh minutes ago, but my point been, been drove home. But I just want it to be embedded in your head that this is what it looks like when the business of the city is held up. So Mr. Feifer, the business of the city is in your hands. Ms. Burns, who's not in her next seat, the business of the city is in your hands. Ms. Winfrey Carter, it's in your hands. So we wanna go ahead and see the political wheel and see how much people really do care about the city of Flint. Thank you, Madam Chair.
She's sick.
My colleague in the fourth ward, would you like the floor? Alright, my colleague in the fourth ward, let's find and take the floor. I will, um, take my time, um,
Hey, Storm.
Just to write down what has transpired. So, uh, there was an original motion to send this to council. Someone made a new motion to keep it in finance. Another motion was made on top of that motion. I mean, excuse me, keep it in special affairs, another motion on top of that motion was made to send it to finance. The motion to send it to finance has failed. The motion to send it to, uh, to keep it here has failed. We are now on our final goal as to whether or not to send it to council. It does not have failed because it has all the support. We're all here, we all will be accountable. We all said we support this project. No need to stop it or do anything different. Again, I'm not sure where the whole conversation became so solely, solely on Ms. Mohammed because this is not the first time, we look at past precedents in which I accept someone who has nothing to do with the resolution, she cannot be speaking to a resolution. So don't want you to be shocked, but that's my stance, because that's been my stance. Stance is not changing. So in the future, so we don't have to say any kind of shock at all, my stance is not changing. There are experts here to speak to these resolutions. They're here for a reason. There are people who deal with HIPAA that didn't understand this. I certainly cannot wait to hear from Ms. Mohammed once we go to council. Because I know she's gonna come up here and explain to us. I don't understand where this became a conversation about her voice manner or where this became a conversation about someone questioning her professional abilities. None of that was ever the issue with me. I've never stated that at one point in time. I simply said the people who can speak to it are here to speak to it. The people who deal with HIPAA every day are here to speak to it. We have taken all this time getting way off course for something that everyone says we agree, we support. We all agree that the work that you are doing is great work and the city needs to continue seeing these services. We all agree. Um, as they say time and time again, that, that we, we, we have to know how to move forward and be okay with not getting our way this time. Well, if it's something we agree with, then it's fine that someone who has nothing to do with this resolution didn't get a chance to speak because they will have an opportunity and be well-respected during their time during city council to speak to the public about this agenda item if we move it. I will be voting yes to support the work of Genesee Health Plan. I will be voting yes to support the work of Communication Access Center. I will be voting yes to support the work of R.L. Jones Community Outreach Center. I will be voting yes to support the work of the Genesee County Free Medical Clinic. I will be voting yes to support the work of Mother Lee Intercession. I will be voting yes for those five hundred and forty-five people assisted, for those eight hundred and six people assisted, for those over thirteen hundred people assisted, for those three hundred and forty-five people assisted. And Genesee Health Plan, you do not have the numbers here, but I know there are thousands. I will be voting yes for behalf of every last person as well as everybody coming in behind them who needs this access as well. I will be voting yes for friends. I will be voting yes for residents since we keep saying, what are we doing for residents? Giving them healthcare access to a whole reset, a whole resource network. Yes, 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 yes again, Madam Chair, go call. This is the vote to send this to council where Ms. Mohammed can speak during, um, time she wants to go in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No. I don't.
I abstain.
Thank you.
Ms. Burns? I abstain because I was, I was standing on my chair and allowing on my time, Ms. Mohammed, to answer the questions. Ms. Michelle? Yes to the residents.
I abstain until my colleagues get the question answered that they ask from the people that they want to answer.
Ms. Lewis? Yes. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is four yes, three no? The vote is four yes, three no, that resolution fails. Alright, moving on to reservations. The chair recognizes the councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I make a motion to amend Resolution two-four-zero-zero-seven-nine with, um, the first line of that resolution to be two-eight-seven, and I've got this for, um, for Davina. Two-eight-seven, hyphen seven, five, one, dot seven-two-zero-zero, hyphen eight-zero-one, dot zero-zero-zero.
What special?
You got this one? Oh, wonderful, you can just pass it out.
How many more they got to go?
This is the resolution for St. John's Ward. So, um, there's amended resolution coming through and I make a motion to amend the resolution to change the account number.
Alright, there is a motion on the floor to amend the account numbers and as soon as we get that all the way down here, you will have support. Support. It's been moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Any discussion? The councilwoman in the fourth ward has the floor.
Yes, um, we discussed this at length, I believe, in, um, in finance and, um, the only thing that's the reason why I was sent to fight to, um, special affairs was to get the correct account numbers and this resolution changed it now. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, is there anyone else? Councilman Murphy, you have the floor.
Why do we, to, um, and why every time a resolution is our company, we are not having the correct account on here? I mean, it's not enough and the financing process and the style. This is becoming wrong and our leadership become abnormal and we should have collected money to correct this.
They broke council. They broke council. They broke council.
The meeting will remain at ease until we can establish more.
How did that come about? Cause that wasn't no easy.
She was gone.
Yeah, she got up, that ain't broke.
This was Quincy's resolution to the St. John neighborhood. Yeah, of course they would break on St. John.
Yeah, cause that, they was already gone.
That was Quincy's St. John. See how they do Quincy?
Essentially, you should call the chairman, I shouldn't do it, the chairman turns.
See how they did. See how they do Quincy?
Always.
He vote for all of they shit, but then they, they hit they heed when it come time for his. Yeah.
They punishing him.
Yeah, they gonna, they teaching him a lesson, I guess.
Exactly why I stopped coming down. Your goddamn anxiety, I'm having down here be my own service.
But listen, did you see how she said she called a court like she called it at ease? It was already broke.
I thought that was in the new rules, that you couldn't do it at ease. But see, but they, you know, they appease more to the damn people they giving the money to instead of the residents.
You was the one that, you know what I'm saying? They wasn't the ones that run up here, but that's why they wanted to hear about HIPAA from you, not from them.
It's the residents' money.
That part right there.
But you, it's the residents' money. So why the residents can't speak about they money? She had a question about HIPAA. And I'm sure all of y'all would've answered her question right. It would've took ten seconds to answer a question about HIPAA. Do y'all have HIPAA programs here? Let's ask you. Two hours.
Yeah, come on.
The problem is that she not already said about you doing the right.
How can you have court? How, how, how can you call a stand at ease when everybody, when, when three got up?
I thought that was part of the rules.
I ain't never seen the most lawlessness. Look at, look at Attorney Kim, just the, just the rule breaker. My thing is, my thing is saying that, my thing is saying that.
Cause, cause he already know who was talking. And she had already talked to him. Right, exactly.
Oh, the other riot, the riot on.
Yeah, right.
People was saying about you during the riot. You should, but she said that you were.
Right. Yeah, my grandson was like, you ain't saying nothing to me, you really doing nothing to me? She talking about why she like this.
I heard the word. And you also helped him to tie his shoes.
You come to the child, not at the child. She don't know the difference between them out and in.
I'm confused.
Uh, me too. Oh, this they doing tonight? Guess what they do? Ah, the city been in trouble, it's like the city is, is done. Yeah, this bad business. They more worried about putting the flag up and helping the people. You know, that's top of the line city business to get, make sure that flag up. Man, bless them. I ain't never seen nothing like that.
Will all councilmembers present in the chamber please return to their seats so that we can continue this special meeting?
Thank you.
Every time, every time you hear Mickey, you start chaos. Mickey, every time you hear you start chaos.
Oh, nah, this is terrible. I said, I shouldn't have, if I knew it was gonna be like this.
She dreaming about you?
Oh, nah, she hate me.
Will all councilmembers present in the chambers please return to your seats so that we can continue this meeting? We will remain at ease. We have enough councilmembers present inside the chambers to continue this meeting and so as long as we have enough councilmembers present inside of the chambers to continue this meeting, special affairs will remain at ease.
She, what's up with, she has got to be out her mind.
Oh, they said it was Kool-Aid.
They've never turned anybody away since she's been sitting in that seat, I promise her. She, Eric used to call up people who, do you want, do you want, uh, you want this money to pass to fix your house? Like, it's got nothing to do with them. It's a bunch of bullshit. It's a pure power move to, to, to make sure that they know that they got power.
Um, would all councilmembers present inside the chambers please return to your seats so that we can continue the meeting? We have enough councilmembers present inside of the chambers to continue this meeting.
You see how many views her podcast got? She ain't fucking see it, nobody looking at that.
So, nah. Put a piece over there, right? That's that Linda Pendleton, she running that Linda Pendleton. Man, she is, she's so funny, man, she can try to play it off. Yeah, she slow as, she slow as dirt. Yeah, she's slow as dirt, she, she want to be incognito. Yeah. For what? Yeah, I'm thinking that she Linda Pendleton, man. She coming in as Cleo today.
Can we state for the public record that there are seven councilmembers present in the chamber who are present and available to continue this meeting? Four are sitting in their seats, present and available to continue the meeting. It has been requested several times that all councilmembers return to their seats so that we can continue this meeting. Once again, will all councilmembers present return to your seats? So we can continue this meeting? We have enough councilmembers present in the chambers to continue this meeting?
Look at Attorney Kim got to break something down to her, she ain't the brightest. Eight ten, can you make some, uh, pictures of Adele Lewis? You can go and get out there on the, on the web. The inconsistency of a foolish councilperson. When they can't pass money, Ladele about be ready to fall out. She be ready to fall out when they can't pass money. She, she, she upset, she, she upset over there. Look at her, she watching a lie.
Roll call, I would like to, once again, offer every councilmember present in the chambers the opportunity to resume this meeting.
Oh, yeah, she watching, she mad as shit. How you doing, Ladele? Hey, hey, what's, she watching, she said, keep lying. She, I was over there lying, she watching a lie. Ladele, she just put her purse up. Instead of put her purse up. Yeah, she over there told me, keep lying. She watching a lie from her council seat.
Thank you, ladies, I appreciate it, glad you finally got the message. Oh, we still have five, we still have a forum, so at any point in time that you're ready to join us, Councilwoman.
He just waved her off.
At any point in time that you're ready, Councilwoman.
Well, she left, it wasn't no problem. You know, they can break corn and it ain't no problem.
All righty, so, um, Madam Clerk, just for the record, I spent the past about fifteen minutes trying to get my colleagues who are present in the chamber to join us in this meeting. Um, and if you're, they will not be joining us in this meeting, so roll call Madam Clerk. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Breslin?
Present.
Ms. Murphy, Congresswoman. Ms. Burns is down there. Ms. Bishad? Present. We have four members present. We have seven members present to get their seats.
The meeting is adjourned.
And so this special affairs meeting is adjourned due to a lack of form.
Damn.
She walked out twice.
They broke corn, they done left and they, it's like this.
Yeah, I've been in New York, at college, I'm on spring break right now, you know? You know, I, you know, I've been around, you know, I've been here since it was not renovated, so, but I was sixteen then, so I couldn't really vote, but I can vote now, so, you know, I'm trying to, trying to get more involved.
I remember when you did your legendary speech up there, you need to do it again.
It's finna be over.
You have a good day now.
Present.
They ain't get what they wanted. They ain't get what they wanted. They ain't get what they wanted. She ain't get what she wanted.
We have four members present, so this meeting is adjourned for lack of form at seven twenty-four.
She so mad with Dale. Look Dale so mad, they was like, oh, well, they, they ended it early. They think they did a strategic move, they had, they had a five vote, so the rules wasn't gonna pass. That's why they did it, the rules wasn't gonna pass. Ladele just checked him. Ladele just checked him, she got mad and walked off. Ladele just checked him.
Was she, was she breaking corn when that day? Happy time, we'll see you next week.
The lies, you damn tell. That's why I stopped coming down here. Because I stopped coming down here because of the rumors. You ain't gonna get my damn anxiety in a damn night, no.
This is some BS. They couldn't get what they, I don't know how Candace even a councilwoman.